All right, looks like I'm on. Thanks for inviting me to pray for the city council meeting tonight. Join with me. Gracious and loving God, watcher over all human endeavors, supplier of all our needs, we give you thanks for your many and abundant blessings. How wonderful it is to be alive at this time and this place, and how marvelous it is to live in such a vibrant community with friends and family. For the awesome beauty and spellbinding wonder of nature, we give you humble thanks. And God, you are attentive to the many complex issues and challenges that face us. Therefore, we pray for our mayor, for this assembled council, for the many city workers charged with carrying out policies. Grant them wisdom and guidance and compassion and creativity. Pray your blessing on the deliberations and decisions made here tonight, that they might be just and good. To that end, we pray that you would grant each person listening, a listening ear, clarity of speech, a passion for justice and wisdom and courage and joy. We pray for the agenda set before us tonight. May what is said be done and done here be pleasing to you and benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Series. We pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Jeff, if you can hear me, can you just raise your hand, please? Okay, looks like we're okay. So let's start the citizens' communication again, Mayor, please.
Okay, at this time, I'll open it up for citizens' communication. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on a non-agenda item, please raise your hand on the Zoom icon and we will call on you. Looks like the first one we have is Mr. Yankley.
Mr. Yankley, I'll unmute your mic.
Yes, good evening on this cooler evening. I've got a couple of things. The last meeting, I was wondering, I contacted Linda Rhino about this, and I think she said something to, possibly to Tom Westbrook, why in the last meeting that there was nothing mentioned about future hiring or expenditure for code enforcement? All the other departments were covered, it seemed like, and that was a good thing. I have no problem with that. But I was wondering why there wasn't an inclusion with code enforcement and some words about, you know, bringing somebody on later on or whatever in the budget. And I hope everyone got my email about the signs that I am so into and around the city and stuff. And the third one is, one of the council members, I still haven't gotten a call back from them, so. And I mentioned that briefly about how they have telephones or numbers for each council person, and that they should check once in a while to see if some constituent has called them. So those are the three things. And the first two, especially the one for the code enforcement, the last meeting, again, there was nothing mentioned about code enforcement, and all departments are, need help, but, you know, I was just wondering why it wasn't mentioned at the last meeting. Thank you.
Okay, I think it was just not in, not a recommendation for a position in the budget, correct?
Yeah, there's two code enforcement officer positions. The secretary position is being held off at this time.
Okay. And what was his other question? I don't remember.
It was about the sign email to us that we all received about the signs. And then no call back from a council member he's left a message for.
Yeah, okay. I don't know about that, but, and as far as the sign.
The sign issue that Mr. Yankley brings up, that would be covered, that type of event would be covered through a temporary use permit. We'll make contact with the folks that hold those recycling events. If they get the proper temporary use permit from the city, then the signs would be permitted to advertise their event.
Excuse me, hello?
Yes.
Yes, on those, Tom, I've talked to you about that before, probably last year, and when they do this, like, for several years now, and they usually post them before this event comes up, which is sometimes three or four or five days, and you had said something about they would have to get a permit. And so these people haven't evidently done this. And then at the other end of this, every year, several times a year, at least two times that I know, the Modesto Civic Center, they have someone, they sponsor or use the facility there for a home show. And those are all good things, but these people just do whatever they want to to our city. And, you know, by the time I notice it or say something, it's too late or nothing ever happens. What has been the outcome of these things?
Well, I can't speak to the Modesto Home Show, which I think you're referring to, but the recycling events, they would need to get a temporary use permit. So all we can do is make contact with them and let them know the appropriate process. If they go through that process to secure the necessary permits, then the signs would be permitted to announce.
So these people weren't permitted to conduct that recycle event, correct?
Correct.
And then last year, when I contacted you about the home shows that are conducted at Modesto Civic Center, you were going to check into that? And I really never heard an answer about that, but you did tell me that they would have to go through the process for that also. And can't we speed up the process when we see these things happening on a regular yearly
Certainly.
Can they be fined?
I don't know if we'd be fining anyone for that without educating them first.
But yeah, I think your comments are noted, and we don't want the signs up either, and we'll, to the greatest extent that somebody does that, we'll make sure that if they're having an event in the city, that they have to have a permit, and if they're not, then they're not allowed to have those. So again, when you have two code enforcement people in the size of our city, it's difficult to get to all of the things, but.
But do you see in the term that you've been here, Mayor, and the city council members, that these little things become bigger sometimes because, you know, these people don't get corrected, and it just leaves an open window for whether it's residents or, you know, businesses continue to put stuff, and we're on this crossroad to everywhere, it seems like, where everybody lives, and Series seems to be sucked into some of these things. And it gets kind of old, it really does. I just wish there was a good solution to this, and, you know, if it means fining or some kind of punishment, then that's what we need to do. All right, thank you for your answers.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Council. I was just wondering if there was an update on the Super Walmart.
We're hopeful to get their, their plans signed from their corporate office this week. If that happens, then we are expecting to have the item before the city council at their next meeting on October 12th.
Thank you.
Okay. Looks like Rosa.
Yes, can you guys hear me? So mine, I don't know that I will need a response, it's more of a comment that I have, and it's, it's a little bit from last meeting. I'm new to these meetings, by the way, and I wanted to acknowledge and appreciate Council McCondit for his motion on the last meeting to, to motion to want to give back some of the healthcare benefits that the council was receiving. And, you know, it's sad to see that your motion was faced with some, you know, negativity. As far as Councilman Klein feeling that it was a bit of a slap in the face, I think I just want you to kind of consider, so many of the community members have lost more than that during this time, and kind of you to acknowledge the benefit that you have a choice not to give back your health insurance. So I just wanted to really show appreciation to Councilman Condit for that. I wanted to say that last meeting, but I didn't get a chance to, so, thank you.
All right, I don't see anyone else, so at this time, do we have any emails? Okay. All right, with that, we will move on. We have no appointments to boards and commissions this evening. Conflict of interest declaration, is there anyone on the council that would like to declare conflict of interest on any of the six consent calendar items or one public hearing item? Okay, hearing done, we'll move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. This time, is there anyone on the council that would like to have the consent calendar item pulled for further discussion? All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to have an item pulled other than item six? If so, raise your hand. Okay, saying none, I'll bring it back to the council for direction on the other items. Move to a dub, one, two, three, A, four, five, A. Second. We have a motion in a second, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit?
Aye.
Councilmember Dorotet?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Vera?
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Okay, item number six, resolution number 2020-102, setting a public hearing on November 23rd, 2020, to consider necessary adjustments to fees for solid waste collection services to provide notice of the proposition 218 public hearing and establish rules for counting protests. Councilmember Condit?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Demus, if you can, just kind of briefly go over the rate fluctuation and what I guess the residents are looking to expect in the rate increases coming up.
The first rate increase is set for January 1st of this coming year, 2021, and September 1st of 2021 will be the second increase, excuse me. And then there will be additional increases set in place for the additional Januaries after that, three of them. So it's a five-year rate increase. The additional three rate increases of 5% each will be a council direction. I'll be bringing the report back in the end of the year, November, December, after we get the financials from Birladi, and we'll discuss at that time if we need an additional increase or not, and that'll be your, your decision.
So the, the rate increases, we're looking at possibly what, a dollar, that they're going to be going up in January? And will that be consistent over time, or I guess?
No, so January's increase is, I have a staff report, January's increase is like $6, $7.
$6, yeah.
And then the one after that will be another few dollars after that, and then the additional will be around a dollar.
Okay. I'd just like to make a recommendation to council that if it is all possible, where we can possibly offset these rate increases, maybe we can find a way to do that. I know people are struggling during these times now more than ever. Maybe we can be creative. If we look at our water rates, for instance, if there's a way that we can lower rates at the same time that we have to raise these due to an unfunded mandate by the state, I think that would be a great opportunity for us and a great opportunity for the residents.
Do you have any suggestions? I mean, I, I don't think we can lower.
Steve and I spent, I mean, and, and the analysts that we have, Alfred, the three of us spent a lot of time in the last six months hashing these rates and where we are, all the dollars, the last three years of financials from Birladi. And unfortunately, with the state mandates for the organics program, we have to buy 12,000 toters and a couple of trucks. That's what this first increase does. Then we offset it so that all the, the big lift of it wasn't up front, we offset that by the additional increase in January, just to smooth a little bit, or the labor part of it, or next, to begin January 1st. So the future increases, the three additional 5% after that, we don't know, the state hasn't come down with guidelines yet on how to deal with the recycling for the diversion. You know, we may have to do waste audits, we may have to do trash assessments, there's those, a lot of things that we don't know yet what that looks like, which is why the additional 5% are in there. It doesn't mean that we're going to, to just ad hoc, just take them. They will be coming back to council, but unfortunately, the first two increases are just to get the equipment.
Sure, and I'm not even mentioning just offsetting in your department. Mr. Westbrook, I don't know if there's other departments that we could offset a rate, such as our water rates, for an example, or any other rates. I just think it's, it is a burden for our residents, as we all know, and it's something that we don't necessarily want to do, but are having to do due to the state. And if there's a way that we can offset another rate by lowering it $6, since we are raising this one by $6, I think that would be a great opportunity for us. Would you have any recommendations, Mr. Westbrook? I mean, can we lower our water rates, for example, by $6 if possible?
The water rates and the sewer rates, both are dictated by need, so there's not a lot of room to lower those rates. The rates that are in play continue for the operation of our system and the improvements to our system. So off the top of my head, I don't know if there's any way that we could reduce those to offset any increase related to the garbage service.
Would there be any rates, just off the top of your head, that could potentially be lowered?
Not that I'm aware at this moment in time.
Might I ask the council that maybe we hold off on this, and we can come up with a clever way to try to find a rate that we could lower by that amount to offset this cost to the residents?
Councilmember Klein? You know, I know we had a discussion on this the last meeting, but, you know, we were looking at ways of possibly tacking on a dollar to go towards code enforcement, and if I'm not, if I didn't follow correctly, we're not allowed to do that because of, of the nature of what this, this service is, correct?
You're correct, though, we could not administer or apply that fee for a code enforcement officer.
So with that being said, with this, the city's not allowed to make any money off this. The rate increases, what they're doing is they're basically going right through the system to, to pay Birladi for their services, to pay for the equipment, and if we did not do this, they couldn't buy the equipment.
Correct.
Okay, then if they can't buy the equipment, and because the state mandated, what would be the penalty if we did not file, follow the state mandate? What would the state do? Would they fine the city? Would they fine Birladi? Who would be, who would be responsible for not following the state mandate?
City's the jurisdiction, so it would come down on us. They have penalties with Assembly Bill 1383 that are up to $5,000 a day. So they're, state's forcing everybody's hands into this, there's just not a lot of options here. If, if, if you elect to not do the rate increase, it may fall on general fund.
Okay, so, and this has to, this has to take place by?
2022, January of 2022, we have to have organics in place, organic pickup.
Okay, so with this rate increase, what it's doing, it's basically paying for services, paying for the equipment without having it, you know. So let's say we did this in January 2022. Birladi would have to, to basically fund the equipment?
Correct.
And who would fund the, the totes? Birladi or would it be the city?
It would have to be, I mean, there's a lot of options at that point, but unfortunately, it's in January of 22, we're behind, you know, we're out of compliance. Decisions need to be made, obviously, a lot sooner than that. So the city's the jurisdictions, so how recycle, when they send their ordinances and the violations, notice the violation comes to us. Mr. Westbrook's got a couple of them the past six, eight months, so.
So the, the city would have to be responsible for up to $5,000 a day in fines, and that money would come out of what fund?
Likely the general fund.
General, general fund at $5,000 a day, so you're looking at, what, $150,000 a month?
They wanted to go that direction.
Okay.
And I don't think that's the direction I'm recommending, I'm simply recommending, we're going to have to raise the rates because it is mandated by the state. What I'm asking is that we hold off until the next meeting or possibly the meeting after that, and when we try to come up with another rate that we can potentially lower, since we are going to have to raise these no matter what.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Well, I, I think none of us want to see any rates raised, and as I pointed out last meeting, all the different jurisdictions and what they're paying, so while these amounts may not look so great, they really aren't that bad in comparison to what other jurisdictions are paying. As far as holding off, even setting a public hearing for another meeting so we can see if we can come up with any way to offset this additional money, I would think if we haven't come up with anything since our last meeting, that waiting another two weeks isn't going to do it. I mean, do you have any suggestions, Councilmember Condit, of, I mean, we can't use the water, apparently, so what else do we have that we could?
I don't know, I don't, have we considered offsetting these rates in other departments with other rate increases? Have we looked at that? I know we have in the Public Works Department, but are there other rates that we can potentially lower by $6?
I'm not familiar with the Public Works one.
Well, in your?
We have in Public Works, what did you mean by?
Well, we've looked in your department specifically on what we can or cannot offset, correct?
So the utilities, which is what this is, are funded by the ratepayers. So we can't offset water, you know, the water ratepayers are paying for the surface water project, for all the capital improvements and the day-to-day maintenance of the system, same as wastewater. And that's what's happening now with garbage, the solid waste program. The solid waste program is a little different because we have a contractor doing the work for us, compared to water wastewater, where we do it in-house. So the financials that we get from Birladi are audited, we do three-year audits and estimations, so we've already calculated that we need 11 months, 11 to 12 months to purchase the equipment and the toters. So what Birladi and myself, Steve and I are trying to figure out now is, if we, if, if council approves the public hearing for November 23rd, and rates go into place January 1st, we're already three months behind, how we're going to collect the money. So we're trying to figure out.
There's no doubt we're going to raise these rates. I'm not, I'm not arguing against that. What I'm asking is that there might be a rate that we can potentially lower, and maybe we approve this tonight, and we come back at the next meeting or following meeting, and with a suggestion that we can lower something by $6. And that, that's all I'm asking. I'm, I'm going to be voting for this tonight because we have no other choice, the state is, has this handcuff. What I'm saying is just weird, there could be a potential for lowering rates at the same time that we have, are mandated to raise them.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Mayor, tonight, we're just setting a public hearing for November the 23rd. All we need to do is say we are going to vote to hold the public hearing on November 23rd, is that correct?
Correct.
And the notice gets mailed.
I'm sorry.
The notice gets mailed with, for tonight, with your passing of the resolution, the notice gets mailed in the next two days, and the notice has all the stipulations in there for the rate or the Prop 218, the rules and the protests.
And I'm not trying to stall that process. I'm just trying to see if there's another alternative that can be brought back to the council where we can offset these rates by lowering something, since we have to tack these on due to the state.
Well, initially, it's, it sounded like you wanted to even hold off on setting the public hearing, but that's not.
No, 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 that, that is not, that is not it whatsoever. We have to do this, as it's been stated. We're being mandated by the state's unfunded mandate. All I'm asking is maybe there's a rate out there that we could potentially lower that would help the public out, especially during this time, but we're going to have to move forward with this, unfortunately.
Okay, so we should go ahead and set the public hearing, but in the meantime, staff and the council can, behind the scenes, try to be coming up with some way that there could potentially be a way that if the rate payers approved it, we could still reduce it, couldn't we, at the end of this?
Absolutely, you can go, you can go down, when you do the Prop 218, you can go down, you just can't add to it.
Okay.
So this could be potentially a worst-case scenario, but sooner you give me some ideas to work through the logistics of it would be better.
Okay.
I just want to make a couple of points. First of all, finding rate, ways to lower rates that the public is currently paying. First of all, I do want to make the comment that I don't like raising rates, I don't want to have to raise rates, and the only reason that we're doing it is because the state is forcing us to do it. Now, having said that, any rate that any rate payer is paying today is based on actual cost of anticipated infrastructure and work that needs to be done. So if we go to lower some rate, you can't just give it to another department because that rate was set based on work that was identified to be done. So if we are not going to do that work, we in theory would have to give that money back to the public and could not be using it for something else. So I just want to clarify that. We just, we can't make profit on sewer water or any other fee that we charge the public. That, that doesn't work, it's against the law. We can't do that. Now, having said that, the 218 vote is a public hearing that we set that sends out a ballot to everybody to vote whether they want to increase it or not. If they choose not to increase it, that's fine, we won't increase it, and at that point, according to staff, the money will more than likely come out of the general fund, which means we will have less money for police and fire and the other substances that come out of the general fund. So what is on the docket tonight is taking the 218 vote to the public for their vote. So I just want to be clear, that's the direction that is being given here. And. And if staff wants to dive in and look and see if there's a way to save money, then I will be the first citizen to say, sure, go ahead and refund that to me on the service that you were gonna do on water or sewers or some other thing, because you're not allowed to make a profit, so.
And that's all I'm asking, just to clarify. I'm not asking to make a profit. I'm not trying to stall the process that's moving forward. I'm just asking what what you asked, is if there's a way to save a dollar, we should try to save a dollar for the community.
But that money would, yeah, have to go back to the public and the project that we were gonna work on would not come to fruition. And I I think that's infrastructure that we've identified we need to do, but still. But I think more importantly, the 218 is the public's ability to vote yes or no on the rate increase. So at this time, I do want to open it up to the public to see if someone wants to comment on this item. It looks like Rosa?
Yeah, I do. I am, first of all, I'm actually a little bit, I'm a little bit upset, first of all, that the mayor, and I don't know if it's because, you know, on your mindset, you're you're on your way out already, but just the the thought or the mindset or your opinion on, you know, that all this money, you would be the first citizen wanting this money back. First of all, wouldn't you want the public to have an opinion on it and maybe just consider looking? There's so many people out there whose bills total more than their rent, and they have no job. People who are undocumented, who cannot get an employment. These are the people that you're serving. So it is so upsetting to hear you talk like that. And I don't know, you know, why. I mean, maybe again, it's because you're on your way out and and it's sad to see, but I'm I'm glad I'm being part of these meetings now, and and I'm definitely gonna be part of these meetings moving forward to hold the next mayor more accountable, because it's very sad to see. And I'm a resident, I've been living here in Series for about 13 years or so. And I would, I understand that money needs to be paid, infrastructure, all that stuff. But I would appreciate the people that are, that we are voting, that I am voting into places where you guys are all sitting to try to sit down, to consider something, or at least tell me you're considering it and go in the office and, I don't know, do nothing. But just to hear you say that, Mayor, is very, is very sad for me. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Akeley?
When the, when this vote comes up, uh, that Jeremy said was in the mail, does it really matter through the state that the citizens are voting? And if it does, is there a certain, you know, majority that can say no to this thing? And at that point, uh, like you said, and the people that have attended council meetings through the years, they know about, you know, money, if you don't have it, you can't spend it kind of thing. So if it's coming from the general fund, how bad, you know, I mean, it's kind of early to even think about it, but how bad can this get? As far as, you know, taking money out of the general fund and paying for this water, uh, you know, myself, you know, I'm in a different position, so I know the fact that, you know, you either pay or you don't. There's usually no exception sometimes, but I'd like to know how far this vote goes to even trying to change anything. And at the same time, these people that don't know too much about how the city works, you know, they got to understand that this money that's in the general fund is for some of the most important things we have, and those are fire department, the police department. Without those, the the city becomes chaotic. And it's just something that's gonna happen, but you know, what's gonna happen with this vote? I mean, is it gonna mean anything to the state? Or are they just gonna push it to the side?
Well, to answer your question, Gene, the this, the vote has nothing to do with the state. It's just the city of Series, and if the residents vote not to accept this increase, we still will have to implement the state's requirements, so that money at that point would then come out of the general fund, and that would be roughly how much money?
About a million dollars a year.
About a million dollars a year would have to come out of the general fund. So that's, you know, the equivalent of probably eight or nine staff, roughly. So so that answers your question. The state doesn't care where we get the money. They just, we have to implement this program.
I I feel very sorry for a lot of these people that are in predicaments and in and different lifestyles and no work and stuff, and, you know, this is haven't come in our lifetime anyway, of our grandparents or some of our parents as far as the epidemic and stuff and in making sacrifices on food and bills and all this kind of stuff. But these people just don't understand that to run a city, and you've said it many times, Mayor, and so have the other council, if you don't have money, the whole system falls apart. You know, and I just can't understand why some people don't understand. You don't want to increase it. It's not a benefit. It's not going to someone's pocket. You know, they're not extorting, I hope not anyway. And without funding, we are nothing. We can't get anywhere. And, you know, again, thanks for the the answer to the voting issue. I wasn't sure if it had some kind of effect on the state or not, so, but, you know, the city of Series has their hands tied, and it all falls on the general fund, and until people that don't understand, understand the city, they're gonna be, you know, in a quagmire upstairs in their mind, trying to figure this all out and thinking that the city's always picking on them. But that's not the case. Anybody that's listening, it's not the case. It's about money. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments, Mr. Akeley. I just wish the public understood that if they don't like these increases, they shouldn't be voting for the people that they place in Sacramento, because these are not the rules that we're putting in place. We're just implementing what's being forced upon us, so. Uh, with that, Mr. Brandt?
Mr. Mayor, you took the words right out of my mouth. If we don't want this to happen, you know, by the state coming down and mandating us to do this, that, and the other thing, we need to vote out, you know, who's up there doing whatever they're doing. Uh, you know, I I commend Councilmember Condit for, you know, doing what he's he's trying to do, what he's trying to do, and I totally understand that increase will happen no matter what. Uh, you know, trying to save a buck here, there, and the other, and, you know, anywhere, you know, which is, it's always a good idea. But the thing of it is, is, you know, we have an opportunity now coming up in November to vote some of these people out. Or, you know, really read your ballots. I mean, I already got my four ballots in the mail. You know, my four sample ballots, and they're all the same, as a matter of fact. But anyway, you know, uh, I always say is good luck, and you know, and I don't want to bring up a bad can of worms. So if we get this third tote canister, so I'm gonna have to look at the three cans that my neighbor leaves out on the court every week. Is that what's going on? You know, we may want to, or you guys may want to reissue or relook at the the fact that the cans need to be hidden or behind a fence or something, and that's it, I'm done.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I don't see anyone else, so I'll bring him back to the council for further discussion or direction.
Approve Resolution 2020-102, setting public hearing, member.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit?
Aye.
Councilmember DeRosset?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Veer?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we have one public hearing item. Public hearing to consider introduction of ordinance number 2020-1061, an ordinance to enact the Second Amendment of a previously approved development agreement by and between the city of Series, guarantee holdings of California Inc. and Pacify, I believe it's Pacify, Cooperative Inc. for an existing operation located at 1442 Angie Avenue. Mr. Westbrook?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, as indicated, this is a Second Amendment to an existing development agreement. The original development agreement was approved in November of 2017, set to expire in November of 2020, after a three year term, which was originally approved. That development agreement had kind of a sliding scale for payment structure, what is called the public benefit fee. If the applicant sold so many, so many dollars of product, then the city would get a monthly benefit fee. That cap was in the amount of $100,000 a month. To date, the applicant has regularly made that cap rate. As we move forward and the extension of that development agreement, the market has changed locally. In 2017, this was one of the first development agreements by any city within Stanislaus County. So we didn't necessarily know how it would go. Because there's more competition in the marketplace, the applicant has has suggested through the Second Development Agreement process if that cap threshold could be lowered from 100,000 to 70. Staff is okay with that reduction in the cap. Furthermore, the applicant is also requesting a 10 year term. There's some improvements to the building and the parking lot that they need to make. They just want that insurance, kind of assurance, that if they're going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to fix the building and the parking lot to best utilize and benefit their business, they want to know that they can be there for a period of time. And then the last thing that this development agreement alters just slightly is the state of California, through the cannabis bureau control, would allow delivery from a retail establishment. There's necessarily a retail delivery license. It just comes along with the existing retail license that the applicant already has. So they're just requesting to be able to deliver from their location, which staff is not opposed to. Additionally, they are current on all of their payments. This development agreement, this this $100,000 cap would be paid through November of 2020. If the development agreement moves forward, then their first payment at a lower cap, at a $70,000 cap, would begin in December of this year of 2020. When Ms. Diaz and I were creating the city's budget, we kind of marked that out, showing that for the cannabis related to this, Pacify, there would be five payments at $100,000 a month, and then moving towards the remainder of the year would drop to the $70,000 amount. So that was included in the budget that was just approved by the council at your last meeting. Uh, and with that, I would be open to ask any questions that you have.
Okay, it looks like Vice Mayor Rhino?
Mr. Westbrook, the, currently, when they have a retail cannabis operation, we require so many security officers there during their, during their hours. Is that correct?
During their hours of operation, yes.
Okay, and that is really to provide security for, you know, maybe their own security, but also the surrounding businesses, correct?
Correct. They're, most of their security, they have a number of cameras at their location. Most of their security is staged outside the front door. So if there's any issues with a customer or so forth, generally, they won't make it inside the premise. And if there is an issue inside, that the security is available to respond in whatever manner they need to.
Okay, so the city is making sure that surrounding businesses have a sense of security. Yet the same business want to employ someone to leave their business, drive into, say, my neighborhood, someone could be watching them leave, know that they have a load of cannabis or however many trips they're gonna make. And now, because there is no security, potentially, any of us, any, anyone in Series could now have a situation in their neighborhood where maybe it's a robbery, maybe there's guns, I don't know, but I just don't think it's safe to allow home delivery of cannabis. I like the fact that we can control the retail aspect by having security, but once they leave that building, what's to say that someone isn't gonna stake them out because the word will get out? And again, now you've brought that into residential areas. I I, I'm not comfortable with home delivery. I mean, I I'm, I've gotten over my, um, maybe my negative feeling about the cannabis retail space, but I certainly don't support home delivery, because I think of my neighbors and all the other people that live in Series and what the potential is. And then as far as a 10 year period, I believe when we did the amendment for Mr. Reynolds recently, we did it for five years, not 10 years. Is that correct?
Uh, the original, or the agreement that Mike was asking for was 15, and I believe the council went with five.
Okay, you believe, or we did go with five?
You did, you did go with five.
Five. So I think if we have done five for the last one, that to be fair, it should be five for any of the ones coming forward. Those are my only comments.
Um, just a question for you, Mr. Westbrook. I thought, I mean, whether we want to limit it or not, I, home delivery is a law, it's state allowed, correct?
I believe it is allowed through the state. I think the applicant has a better sense of what they talk about deliveries. I don't, I think it's a couple of deliveries at a time. It's not making 10 or 15 deliveries in any one vehicle, but the applicant would better speak on the actual, the the sense of delivery that they're looking for.
And it was my understanding that if someone like Amazon wanted to start delivering, there's nothing we could do about it.
I'm not sure if there's anything that we can do about it.
I've been told, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure on that, but I believe that when we originally had these discussions, if someone wanted to come right into our city and drop something off, there's nothing the city can do.
But but Mayor, don't you think there's a difference with getting an Amazon delivery than somebody staking out a cannabis retail?
I don't think so. I mean, there's plenty of Amazon drivers I see that don't, that roll up in any type of vehicle.
No, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, is that if somebody is staking out the cannabis retail store, and they see that they're out delivering cannabis, well, then they know, they're, they know following them that they're going after cannabis versus the the Amazon driver. That's just my personal feeling.
Councilmember Condit?
Just going off the mayor's point, you know, if a dispensary in Turlock or Modesto, wouldn't they be able to deliver within our city limits if they were called upon to deliver?
If they have a, within their jurisdiction, then yes.
So at the end of the day, to the mayor's point, we really can't keep them out from delivering into our city limits.
Correct.
So, so we might as well try to benefit, I think, to the best potential as possible. I would be open to the 10 year agreement. My only caveat, as it has been in in past recommendations, is that we would earmark a percentage of this monthly income to go towards retention for public safety officials. I do think that would be a good structure to have, so that we can earmark that money specifically to help with retention efforts, something similar to the city of Riverbank, which practices similar in policy.
Okay, Councilmember DeRosset?
Does the applicant have any issues with going to a five year term? Is that ever discussed?
They proposed a 10 year term. We didn't necessarily discuss a five year term. They just said that for them in their business model and the improvements that they want to make to the property, a 10 year would benefit them the most.
Okay, you know, part of them going, nice dollars per month cap, and I think that's a win win, so I'm okay with the 10 year. Has there been any issues with, that we know of within Stanislaus County, of any robberies or anybody getting jumped in regards to, you know, somebody's delivering, say, some cannabis?
I'm not familiar with any. I don't know if Chief Collins has any.
I haven't seen any of that. And then would they, could they be delivering like, you know, five big trees of marijuana? They probably wouldn't be doing that. I'm just saying, right? So I don't think that what they'll have is is a whole lot of stuff on them. So I'd be okay with with all of it, 10 years, and the structure. Yeah, I'm all right with the 10 years. I, this is the type of business, it's a little different than others, and I can understand if they want to do improvements to it and you know, and they want some assurances that they have longer than five years, so I I'm okay with that. they have longer than five years, so I'm okay with that. Unless there are any other comments to the council, I do want to open it up to the public, so the public can speak. This time, if anyone would like to speak on this item, oh, you want to speak now or afterwards?
I'll speak right now, if you don't mind.
Councilmember Klein?
You know, you know, we gave Mr. Reynolds a five-year deal, and he was asking for 15. You know, with, with that, I can be happy with the 10-year. I mean, I'd rather have them identical, but I can be happy with the 10. The thing that bothers me is, you know, if we would earmark some of this money originally for cannabis to go to public safety, with losing, losing $30,000 a month, and if we earmarked it, we would be cutting away from public safety $21,000 a month. If we would earmark 70% of the money, so at $30,000 a month, if we would earmark 70%, that would have been $21,000 a month that we would be taking away from public safety, and $252,000 a year that we would be taking away from public safety's budget. So with not earmarking it, we have the, we have the latitude, as a council, to take that $30,000 deduction and reduce where we feel that we can work with, and not make a big impact on public safety. And that is what scares me when you earmark it for public safety, because then it needs to come out of public safety. The $21,000 or $30,000 we're losing, we can, you know, guide Mr. Westbrook in the budget and take it away from others, others, you know, departments where there wouldn't be a big impact, because you're talking two to three bodies? You take one from fire and one from police, you take two from fire? You know, how would you, how would you take that away from there? So I am not in favor of earmarking any money for public safety, because it goes into the general fund, and when we lose the revenue, we as a council can work with the city manager and determine how we want to take those cuts.
And I think just as a, just a point to raise, that even with the reduction in the cap going to $70,000, one of the, one of the things that was in the first agreement is this is really for medicinal use only. After the development agreement was approved, the state of California allowed for the retail sales of cannabis, which has a sales tax component. So there is a component, even at the reduction, a $70,000 a month cap, that we're still getting sales tax revenue from this business, that we had never really anticipated.
At this time, I want to go to the public. I, I see someone's hand, it's been up for a little while, it says H, so I don't know.
Mayor, if I may ask, can we have the speaker state their full name for the record?
Yeah, so if you could please state your full name for the record, because we don't get, not everybody's name is fully shown on the, the board. There's just an H, so I don't know who to, who to call you.
I've sent a request to unmute your mic. I will ask a second time.
Okay, well, let's move on to the next one, then. Mr. Yeakley?
Dean, I'll send a request again to unmute your mic.
Excuse me.
There we go.
Yeah, so I just want to say, I agree with Linda Rhino's view on the safety part, and I was kind of wondering too, because they've, we've got cannabis in, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Because we have cannabis in our city, and it's drawing in revenue, and that's a good thing. But there was, I guess, I assume there's still cities in California that don't allow or want cannabis dispensaries in their communities. At that point, this delivery thing is, if we don't want them to deliver in our city, is the state saying you can't do that? Because we've already got cannabis dispensaries here? Or if a city doesn't have them, they can't bring in delivery? I'm kind of confused on that whole thing, but being a freight driver for many years as a career, it's very isolated, but it can be very dangerous. There's been times when they've stolen hold trailers and killed the driver, and I think we've seen some of that in the news through the years. It only takes one time in, for somebody, and just like Councilmember Rhino said, you know, these people are not stupid. These people are educated idiots most of the time. Well, they'll plan something out, and they'll watch, and they'll wait for the right time, and it might be something small, it might be something big they're after, but it's gonna take somebody's life, and I sure don't want to see it happen in Series. I don't want to see it happen anywhere, but it's obvious, eventually, this whole system where they're taking drugs, or whether it's edibles, or, or marijuana, or what, you know, people don't have to pay for something, they're gonna take it from you if they think they got the will to. All right, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands at this time.
I know the applicant is on the participant list. I don't know if they want to speak. If, if you want to speak, applicant, raise your hand.
Okay, Devin?
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, and members of the council. Just want to make sure you can all hear me.
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I think everything's been covered well, the, the 10 years, certainly the aesthetic improvements we want to do to the building, which will positively impact that area of the city. We would like that amount of time to amortize those expenses. As far as delivery, this is something that's already happening. As mentioned, retail facilities in other cities are currently able to deliver and are delivering to the City of Series. So that's limiting tax dollars that could be coming from local retail dispensaries. So that's an important note to, to mention.
Good evening, mayors, members of the council. This is Ron Roberts. I'm standing next to Devin Stettler. I just would like to remind the City of Series, and the council, the mayor, the current city manager, and the previous city manager took a very courageous step forward three and a half years ago. They were the first to approve a licensed dispensary in the county of Stanislaus, and since then, many cities around the county and the tri-county area has used the numbers that the City of Series has put forth in developing their own program. It's taken some of these other cities two and three years to be able to catch up. That's millions and millions of dollars that the City of Series has been able to bring in. That experience working with the City of Series, the council, the city manager's office, the planning and building department, was very unique. They, they did their research, they took their tours. Obviously, many of them weren't pro-cannabis, but they saw through it, they realized the numbers, and they were rewarded for it. It was a courageous move. It took a lot of social capital we put on the line, and that's something to be commended for. I mean, we appreciate it as, as business owners and, and as consultants, and we won't, we won't forget that, we won't stop talking about that, because it's been a different experience in some of these other cities. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Doesn't look like we have any other speakers at this time, so do we have any emails? Okay, with that, I will bring it back to the council for further discussion or direction.
Move to approve introduction of ordinance number 2021-1061.
Second. Do we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condon?
No.
Councilmember Drossit?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Viera?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-2.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to council member referrals. Any council members that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda this time? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to reports. I have nothing to report. Councilmember Klein?
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Condon?
Nothing tonight.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Drossit?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, then we'll start with staff. Tisha, I think? Okay, Tom?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Tom? Mr. Collins? Ms. Wise?
I just got a few things tonight. I'm proud to report that our apparatus is finally in service, minus one, our Quint. We need to do a little bit more training on that and a few warranty items, but everything else is in service. We will be working on some sort of ceremony once that gets to be in service. Chief Serpik continues assignment out of county at the North Complex near the community of Quincy. I've been, haven't been able to get ahold of him today, but the fire has crossed the fire lines and is threatening the community of Paradise again, unfortunately. Hopefully, I'll hear from him pretty soon. Also, this afternoon, 73,000 residents were evacuated from the Santa Rosa area with the glass fire over there. That was at 3:00 PM this afternoon. It's been a busy month at the fire department, as you know. We had the promotional ceremonies. We also gave the Medal of Valor to Patrick LeBeau. And we also, last week, we gave Captain Miller, he received the firefighter of the year from the American Legion. I just wanted to note, maybe you may not know, two of our personnel within the last month have written articles and written a book. So one of our personnel is written in fire engineering. That's Captain Dominic Maganini. He wrote the neutral plane and fire conditions. That's, it's a pretty good honor to write in that magazine. It's probably one of the most acclaimed magazines in, in the fire service. Also, one of our personnel has written a children's book, and it was just published, or it came out last week. It's called Here Comes the Woo-Woos, a fire department book. And that's all I have.
You. Jeremy?
I'm there.
Okay, Daniel? All right, with that, deep. We're gonna try to move you over to the panel supervisor to see if we can hear you.
Yes, can you hear me now, Mayor?
There we go.
Okay, I don't know what happened. The computer just went blank, and then it came back on again. See, I'd just like to give you an update on the business grants that the county is giving out. We have, we have more applications than we anticipated. It's taking a little bit longer than we expected to get through these and rate them. Now, we've got about 1,200 applications for grants, so it's gonna take until next week sometime before we're through scoring them and start awarding the money. Because it's so many, we're considering putting in additional $5 million from our contingency. The original amount was 10 million, but I suspect it's probably gonna go to 15. We'll be talking about this tomorrow at our meeting. But I wouldn't anticipate the scoring to be finished until probably the end of next week, because there's so many applications. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, it looks like we will move to closed session at this time. We have two items. One is a worker comp case, and then another conference with legal counsel on existing litigation. If anything is to report after that, that closed session, we will come out and report that. Otherwise, we will adjourn to the next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be held on October 12, 2020, at 6:00 PM. So thank you.[1547.65]
Thank you. Coming back to report that the council gave direction to staff on both items, closed session items.